Good evening. We're going to call our meeting to order at 6 o'clock. If we could kindly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see so many students here and families here in the audience this evening. Thank you for joining us. But this is that one time of the year where I get to open it, the meeting, for a very brief moment because what we need to do for a start of business is to determine our positions on this board.
I would nominate Wendy Regger for chairman of the school board.
I'd second.
All those in favor? I would say the motion carries. All those opposed?
I guess I had staying.
Staying? Okay. Motion carries four, zero, one.
I'm going.
She's making a break.
Thank you.
Lois, a name tag.
Thank you.
Do you want me to help you with that?
No.
Thanks. You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Wait a minute. Afraid I don't get rid of you, do I?
No, you don't.
Well, let's see. This is Lois's. I should put who's who, right? Okay. Yep. Yep. No problem. We'll do that in a minute. Right. Oh, lordy. Okay. Uh, yeah. I've got my. If I have a stroke, we all will know why. Okay. I know, right?
We do have a defibrillator, I think.
Yes. Excellent. Okay. There's an AD in the building. Okay. So, let's get our list here and talk through who wants to do what this year. Okay. Do we have a nomination for vice chairman?
I'd like to nominate Les Shepard as a vice chair.
I'd second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
I'm staying.
All right. Budget. So remind me, do we have to vote on the rest of them or do we just?
No, just.
All right. All right. Who wants to do budget committee? And I can be the alternate again. You're really good at going to those. Though I volunteer, but I never have to go. Okay, how about curriculum committee? Did you want to do that again?
I can stay on that.
Okay. All right. We've got a two for that. Molly, any interest in curriculum? It is during the day often, just FYI. So it's okay if you don't. You're not required to. Let me kind of circle back around to that one. Master planning. Okay. Everybody good with that?
Just that's one that meets the fourth Wednesday of the month at 7:00 with Jason Bichard. So that'll meet this month. And I know they're anxious to have you. So thank you.
Awesome. Okay, our NHSBA delegate. Do you want to do that? Okay. And policy. Do you want? Okay. Yeah. So Jenny and I can do policy. Professional development. I can stick with that if you want. Okay. And I can keep doing PTA and rec if nobody else wants those. Okay. The fun ones. SEA negotiations. Is that a one or a two?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. One person or two people?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
If somebody else wants to join, that's great.
It's all not volunteer too quickly. Anybody want to do? See? All right. Jenny's gonna do.
And Jenny would be most welcome.
Awesome.
But I know those meetings are often at like, what, 3:00?
Yeah, right after school.
Okay. So maybe Jenny can kind of be backup on it.
Okay.
Okay. SUSP negotiations. Okay. Les, do you want to do that or do you want to split it up? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So got Les and Jenny. All right. Steering and goal setting. That's an empty one. That was Frank.
And that really is just a few times at the beginning of the year to establish our district goals. Once we have those established, we, it's maybe three meetings at most in August, September.
Okay. And wellness? Anyone wellness? Or Andrea? Okay. Are there any that we missed? I've got a blank other, but I think that's. Are we still doing? We've got CIP on the agenda. Are we still doing CIP?
I kind of morphed into the master.
That's master planning. Okay. All right. Okay. Also.
So who's gonna do CIP?
That would be Molly.
That would be Molly. Okay. So, all right. So let me put it out. So CIP is Molly. And also, building and facilities isn't on here.
I had done it before.
Although that's, yeah. Okay. Which is not really. That's just checking in with Keith. Are we missing anything? I think. I think that's it. So. I think the first thing we want to do is we want to thank everybody for passing all of the SAU 90 budget warrant articles this year. That was amazing. We passed our budget. We passed both of Keith's warrant articles for the HVAC at Center and for our regular $300,000 we do every year. So that was amazing. We really appreciate that. We want to welcome Molly St. Jean as our new member. Congratulations. And we do want to say, we didn't do a whole lot, but we do want to thank Frank. Frank DeLuca gave us many years of really great service and he isn't here with us tonight, but we want to thank him for everything that he did for us. All right. What are we gonna do? Public comment. So reminder about public comment. So we're gonna start public comment. We have 30 minutes to do public comment. It's gonna be three minutes per person. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, come on up. Okay. So why don't we table the rest of public comment until the end? And I think we have some friends here from, it looks like the Geography Bee? And the Spelling Bee? Do we want to go ahead and do that now so you guys don't have to stay for the whole thing?
Thank you for having us. First, I'd like to introduce Will Deneo, who is our Spelling Bee champion. As you know, Spelling Bee at Marston School is an annual tradition for our fifth graders. We held it on January 24th. The fantastic thing that I always tell the kids is, there's only 12 students who get to come down and come down to the floor and be part of the final Spelling Bee. So out of over 100 kids, that's a great honor. And then, of course, for Will to kind of rise above everyone else and be our champion is a tremendous feather in the cap for him and, of course, for his fifth grade teacher who feels very proud of him. But I thought I'd give Will just a moment if you had questions for him and anything you wanted to know about his experiences with the Spelling Bee.
Well, we always want to know what you want on.
I want on the word turquoise.
Turquoise? That's a good one. Does anybody have any questions for?
How did it go moving forward? I know you were our representative. Were you able to tell us what that was like? I know there's a process there, too.
So I like went on this website and it had like 50 questions, so I had to answer those.
If you recall previously, we used to send students to Concord every single year. COVID, they changed it. And then they've kept it with the online version. So students go and take an online, it's kind of vocabulary and spelling. And if they get that, then they move on to the big stage. The tricky thing, and I always give our students kudos, is they go against the students who are out here, too. So it's fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade because in some places, five through it is middle school. So when Will's doing these things, he's competing against students well above his grade level. So again, another impressive feat. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And we would be remiss in not saying this is a big week for the Deneo family. So Mr. Deneo is our new assistant fire chief in town. So congratulations.
Good evening. I'd like to invite any of the GOB and Spelling Bee top threes. Come on up. On January 29th, we held our Spelling Bee, our final Spelling Bee at Hampton Academy. And I think we had about nine or 10 finalists from different grades. And I think we were in the back of the library for a good 45 minutes because everybody can, everybody knew how to spell and we were going through lists. And I want to thank Ms. Cara Dumont and Jenna Nato for being our judges. And Chris Strong for running the GOB. She's run it for many years, doing a great job. So in first place, we had Ava McWilkin. She couldn't make it tonight. And Kellen Parsons and Shaden Lambert, second and third. Some of the words I wouldn't even try and touch, but these guys made it through a lot of them. So I'll let you guys ask them any questions.
What'd you go out on?
I don't remember.
That's okay. Do you remember which one you went? Which one? So which one did you get wrong? That's what I wanted to know.
The word I got on them was Lex.
Oh, that's, yeah.
What does it mean?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Do you know how to spell it now?
L-E-K-S.
Yeah. I would not have been able to spell that either. So that's very, okay. Congratulations, guys. All right. Do you want us to get a picture?
On March 5th, we held our GOB. And I'd like to introduce our top three for that. Anthony DiMonico, Aiden Pilonic, and Ryan June.
So was it easy or was it hard?
It wasn't too hard.
That's what we like to hear, right? So we didn't have Geography Bees when I was in school. So do you just, do they give you examples of places and you name rivers? Or what do you do? Somebody, yeah. Anthony, tell us about it.
So the questions were like odd one out. So like what country isn't in this continent or what country is in this continent? And, yeah, that was, and then like states and.
Yep. That kind of stuff. So what was your last question?
I want on the question, what ocean is Princess Charlotte Island in?
Oh, okay. What ocean is Princess Charlotte Island in? The Pacific. Congratulations. Good job, guys.
Can we get a picture of the five of them?
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great.
Hey, guys, come on back up.
Hey, guys, come on back up. We're gonna get a picture of all five of you.
Dr. Cass is gonna get a picture of you. And if your parents want to come up and have their pictures, be in the picture, feel free.
Instead of moving the kids.
Feel free to come up on the stage. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're fine. No, it's all good.
Thank you, guys.
So you guys can feel free to make a break for it. So, school board member updates. Does anybody have anything they want to report back from their committees? I can't, oh, oh, we didn't get a picture of Will. That is true. Or Will. Do you want, oh, his mom's gone.
I did.
Oh, that's true. While he was talking. Yeah.
I sure did. Thank you.
Okay. So does anybody have anything they'd like to report? Andrea?
I just know that the curriculum groups are still working with demonstrated success to continue to align vertically and horizontally the math curriculum.
Yep.
The language arts is pretty much settled, so it's more the math curriculum that they're working on.
That's great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You got anything, Jenny? I do have a couple of things. One is for the PTA. So we are coming upon election season for the PTA and they have a number of openings, both for the board and I think for some school coordinators, possibly? Jen, do we have school coordinator positions open as well? Okay. So if anybody is interested, we are really, really in need of volunteers for the PTA, both to be on the board, to help out at events. So if anybody would like to volunteer, they can contact Jen McClellan at hamptonnhpta@gmail.com. Correct. Last but not least, the rec department has their Easter egg hunt coming up this week. So on Saturday, the 23rd, it's gonna be behind Marston at 11:00 a.m. It is free. It is for kids who are from toddler up through grade five and just bring a basket with you. They have some fantastic prizes that have been donated. It should be a lot of fun. Waiting for somebody else to talk. Yeah, it's me. Okay. Mr. Lannan, you want to come up and give your report?
Nice to see all those former Center School kids doing so well. And congratulations, Molly. Welcome to the school board. You're gonna really enjoy yourself. Thank you for having me tonight. Just, we're deep in the throes of celebrating literacy at Center School. We had a very successful guest reader day here at Center School. Wendy from the library came onboard and Lois as well. So thank you all for joining us. We're in the middle of just, well, actually, the beginning stages of our second annual One Book, One School program where everybody in the whole school is reading the same book each and every night. There's dedicated chapters that we're focusing on and going straight through succession. And we've had special guest readers that are involved in that. So that is posted on our website if you're interested in taking a look at that. So reminding the parents to make sure you're reading with the kids at home and that special book. There's trivia contests every single day, offering some incentives for the boys and girls who are reading. We just finished second trimester. We're doing report cut conferences actually this week. Tomorrow is our dedicated day. We'll be in the building until after 6:00 tomorrow doing conferences straight through the day. So we're excited to meet with the parents in person to have these conferences. We are in the final stages of our planning for kindergarten information night. That will be April 9th at 5:00. So we're excited to get that information out to parents. And as soon as I have some preliminary numbers on kindergarten, I'll get them to you probably that evening because I'll just come from that meeting right before I meet with you next month. We're also following our regulations to meet with parents once a year on Title I. So we'll be having our Title I information night as well. That's tomorrow night. We're excited to see the little ones. We've had Lego club for second grade and first grade, but we're excited to see the kindergarten as staying out to school and participating in some after-school activities. So they're really enjoying that. I want to thank the PTA for their continued support. They're providing some sandwiches tomorrow and some food for us at the schools tomorrow. So that is great. And they're also in the planning stages for our annual week of wonder that's coming up. Other than that, we do have some planning stages already for transition. Be meeting with Ken and Nathan to start talking about transition for next year, believe it or not. Timelines as well as getting ready for preparation for class lists. I know we'll be sending out a letter to parents April 1st stating, you know, if you have any special questions or concerns, you have a two-week window to get that in to help us with placement. And I believe that is everything. Do you have any questions for me at Center School? Thank you all. Have a great night.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you again. Some similar things to Mr. Lannan. We'll also have our Title I information night tomorrow, information afternoon from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Just a great opportunity if your student receives Title I support or you're just interested in learning a little more about it. Placement letters will go out. I guess I'll just put out there. And you'll read ours very carefully when it's sent out to the community. But it's really important for us to get a little bit of a different lens on your students. So who are some people maybe that work well as learning partners or don't? What is their preferred learning or teaching styles? Well, you can't directly request a certain teacher having an understanding of your child as a learner is helpful for us. You know, they don't always carry over year to year. So it's important if you've sent one in the past to always send an updated one each year for us. Otherwise, we're working on transition as well. So it's crazy to think it's April, May, June almost, but it's sort of like, it's the last year of the school year. And we're gonna be putting out a lot of information to parents about, you know, sixth grade information night, two, three information night, step-up days and things like that. So it's just super important to check our website and our Facebook pages and read our newsletters carefully because there's going to be a lot of updates coming out in the next few months. Your books go on sale later this month. Just look for a notification about that. And we recently completed the SAS writing. It was a lot earlier than it normally is. And it's because they wanted to do some hand scoring and some norming. They added a new narrative prompt. So we'll be excited in the springtime to kind of see how our students did on that assessment. Other than that, we're open for questions at Marston. Awesome. Okay. Take care.
Thanks, Mr. Sadler. Mr. Hawkins, come on down.
So you have our, my monthly report. One thing I would like to point out on there, and I'd like to thank Caleb Shaw and Kelly Birch for bringing in a tree specialist, bringing the kids outside. And if you look around some of the school grounds, you'll see there's, they've been tapping the trees. And kids have been actually doing experiments with the different types of sap that they get. And they're learning about the different trees that they're tapping and how the sap is different in each one of those trees. And they're actually reducing it in science class. So ex-science teachers standing here, so it's always a good time when we can just make those connections. Also, the third graders are coming over tomorrow and Friday. Ms. Birch is gonna be doing a presentation on our new weather station. So excited to have him over and hopefully we can continue doing things like that because it's always good to get the younger kids over and have the older kids teach them a few things. We also finished up our SAS writing on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week. Things went along very smoothly and we're looking forward to being able to do a deep dive into the data that we're actually getting from those, build some direction for next year and figure out if we need to hit any important spots to assist kids. We have parent-teacher conferences tomorrow. Will be, I think, 11:45 to 5:30. So parents should have been given invitations. And the sixth grade is actually doing the Ogora Greek presentation down here in the cafeteria. So if anybody'd like to swing by and see that there, each student has, will be all set up on the tables and should be good. One of the big things that we're looking at right now is just getting things organized to start looking at next year. I'll be working with Mr. Sadler mostly about getting the transition for fifth to sixth grade and getting teams set up and all the great things that we do at the end of the year to get ready for the following year. So. And Thursday night, we have our eighth grade oratoricals. So if you'd like to swing by, we'll be having the large group of them come up and they get judged. And it's always wonderful to see the kids up there and giving some of those speeches. I'm sorry. Hang on one second.
It came to my attention this week that you have a unified sports team.
Yes.
Where you're mentoring 20 regular students with 10, with 20 special students. And that you guys play sports. And you're one of two schools in New Hampshire that offer it.
Yes.
Would you please, for our next meeting for next year, find out how much the bus would cost to take our kids over to Exeter to play them?
At this point, I don't think it was a cost issue. The two things that are the most, are the hardest to get right now are buses and officials. So trying to, we're having the same problem with our baseball, trying to get up to Rochester by 3:30. There aren't enough bus drivers. We have, I think we have enough buses, but there aren't enough bus drivers to be able to get all three of our schools, get all the kids home, and then have, usually, I think in the past, there have been extra bus drivers who would just do sports. So it's, it is across the board. I have a son who's in high school and he plays baseball. And the AD from the high school was like, we are gonna have to have the older kids drive to the games. So it's, it is across the board. So it's mostly about transportation. I 100% agree that we are one of two middle schools in the state that are doing this. And we continue to, we're gonna continue this next year and give them as many opportunities as possible. And my hope is that we can get them on some of the, some games.
Well, let us know what we can do to help because this is a great team, great sports. Bonnie Heath is so excited.
Yes.
I just think it's a great thing and we need to support it.
Yep. Yep. And hopefully, we were talking about continuing basketball for a little while, but then also trying to find something in the spring for the teams to be continuing with. It was brought up, we might want to try pickleball, but I'm leaving it up to the professionals in this situation and they'll pick out what the next.
Are the kids interested in pickleball is the question?
I think everybody would be. I love pickleball. So I think they'll, I think they would have a good time. But just getting them, you know, everybody involved with each other and after school and just giving them that opportunity. So it's, it is great. And Miles Plant and Bonnie Heath didn't know that much about basketball, but they know a lot about the kids and they, they have huge hearts and they'll, they'll keep doing it. So thank you.
I had a suggestion. Perhaps if you're looking for officials, perhaps some of the high school kids that work with the unified teams up there as part, as part of their extended learning opportunity, ELO. They may, you may be able to get them to come officiate.
Yeah. And again, a bridge program for some of our kids going up there. I think it's gonna be great because they have a, I think they've been doing it for a longer time and they have a good foundation built. So if we can be a feeder program for that, even better. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. All right. Let's see. Dr. Lois DeSilva-Napton, please. Did you bring us donuts? You'd think it's a donut box, but it's not. I'm gonna talk a little bit about it and it was.
I'm going to talk a little bit about it, and it was...
In my report, and welcome, and congratulations. So, yeah, we had our first parent partnership workshop, and it's a series of three workshops that we are presenting parents with these calming boxes. And this is a joint effort with SAU 21 and the United Way. So we were able to, with Patrice Baker's help, we had about 85 of these, and so these boxes come with all kinds of presents and gifts. The goal is to help the kids build skills and confidence to cope with everyday challenges. So there's toys in here, there's all kinds of books, and fidgets, and puppets, and this really cool thing about emotions, and it helps the kids understand when they feel something, what can they do with those kinds of feelings. And it just really promotes parent partnerships with their children, especially when emotions are running high. There's also a nifty little flip card of calming breathing strategies. So we spend 90 minutes with the parents, we teach them all of these things, and we send them home with this calming box. And our first parent partnership went really well. We had 19 parents there, we had 12 kids. Yeah, it was, it was awesome. Granit State Music came, we got some funding for them to provide music, we watched the kids, well, the parents learned all about their calming boxes. So that is a really exciting initiative that's definitely off the ground, and we have two more workshops coming up this fall. We also have some time and places, and you can set up meetings. If anyone has a child ages 0 to 8 years old, they can sign up to get a calming box, and just look in Tim Lannan's newsletter, it'll give you all the information. There's a link to set up times. But on Tuesdays between April and May, at nighttime, or no, actually daytime, 9 to 5, you can set up an appointment and get your very own calming box. Another initiative that's running up and running that we're so, so excited about is Hampton Early Childhood Coalition. That was in my report, too. So that is, we had our first, very first meeting, and I was blown away by the resources that came around a table in the Lane Library at 3 o'clock on a Wednesday afternoon to discuss the amazing resources that Hampton has at our fingertips. And even people around the table didn't realize that there were other people around the table that could also help. So we're building a resource list, and this is, and for, this is the Early Childhood Coalition. I know there's other coalitions in Hampton, and they do other things. So our focus is early childhood and the importance of it. So we will be naming the coalition at our next meeting, and you'll hear lots and lots of things about that. That's all the good news. The bad news? The numbers, as you can see, our special ed numbers, they just keep going up and up and up. We are, we've increased by 17 kids this year, and the district's only increased by 12. We are working at capacity with the students that are coming in, and they are still moving in, and we are still receiving referrals, even at this time of year. I think that the, I think the pandemic is still just showing its ugly head with some of our students and, and some of their behaviors and their challenges and their academics, and we're just all kind of feeling the crunch right now. So we are, we are definitely at capacity. Center is looking for a para at this time. It is on the website. And our caseloads are rising, nobody's over 20, just to let everybody know, but our caseloads are, we have about, half of our case managers now have 13 or more people on their caseload. Nothing, no one is above 17. But I just want to, I know that you often ask those questions, so I just wanted to give you that information. That's all I have tonight. I thank you so much. Yes.
At this time, are you making an ask for more staff at this, tonight? We have a board meeting in, what, three weeks? But I know at the last meeting, we talked about it.
Right. So Mariah and I are still working out budgetary factors, and right now, aside from that para that we are hiring due to, due to a need, I mean, we're not going to come and say, you know, that is being advertised for. But no, no, I'm not asking right now to say we need another whole person right now, anywhere.
Thanks.
Except for the para support.
All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Are we doing checks? We've got one from, we've got a check from Marston and a special ed check? Okay, all right. We'll do. Okay, so Amber, please. Sorry. Ms. Levine. I call everybody else by their last name.
So we've been pretty busy with recording and broadcasting everything that's been going on in the three buildings. Mr. G. Rosso has been running around taking pictures of all of our wonderful events, which has been great. We also are in the process of bidding out for Chromebooks and all of our other bids that we have going on for next year. We also replaced nine copiers over February vacation. We were up for a lease, so we replaced those. We also just got a security grant for $10,000. So we are updating the security cameras over at Center School. So Dave Hansberry and Mr. Lannan have been working on that. We're also trying to make sure we are, making sure our officers and our community partners have access to all the buildings and are aware of all the new changes that are going on. So we're meeting with them and updating maps and things that we need to do. I'm also finishing a project on our data governance plan, which will be coming out the end of this year, kind of what we need to do for cybersecurity and privacy protection and all of that. So I'm working on our packet, so you guys will have that at the June school board meeting. So look for that. That is it. You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Lassard, anything tonight?
Everyone, welcome new board members. Welcome, Molly. Gives me great excitement to say that I'm looking forward to, looking for summer hires. No school board could be without requesting summer hires. So we're looking for some motivated people. It's not too early to apply, and if you're off during April vacation, that's probably a good time to come by and see what we do here at the schools for cleaning up. With all that said aside, though, I really want to thank the voting people of Hampton for supporting both the warrant articles, the long-term... Something in my hair, Mariah?
It's just, I think it's not high enough. She can't hear you.
This is like comedy. Is this thing on? Hello? Okay. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mariah. Anyways, again, I'd like to thank the public for supporting our warrant article and our long-term maintenance. We are still looking for one full-time custodian, and we are, still have openings for summer Mariah and the team have been working very hard on getting our RFPs out and to get ready to do some of the work. Please know that all the work that passed will not be completed this summer. Some of that work will take a little bit longer. There's some, there's some different steps that have to take place first, but it should be a very busy summer, and we're excited. And again, I want to thank the general public for really supporting us and thanking the school board for their support for our projects, too. Thank you. I don't know if you have any questions. More than happy to answer any that you might have.
I think we're good. You're free.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Borg, come on up.
Welcome, Molly, and welcome back, Wendy.
Thanks.
Hi, everybody. Nothing new and exciting. Mariah and I are meeting once a month, kind of brainstorming, come up with maybe new ideas, how to get participation up, and so we're meeting once a month, and we're starting to do that and trying to come up with some ideas. Other than that, it's, it's March, and April, May, June, and going to go quick. Questions? Anybody? All right. All right. Have a good night.
All right, Dr. Costa. Wow, boy, I forgot your name.
That's okay. So we have several checks that we want to make sure that we receive tonight. We have a generous donation to, made out to Center School from the Hampton PTA for $2,598 that we want to acknowledge and thank for a beautiful generous donation.
Wait, that's not the one that we have, right?
We have several, we have several.
Oh, I just have the one.
Are we going to move them all at the same time?
Yeah, we can, but I just wanted to. Yep. So there's that one. And additionally, there's one that's from Marston School for $5,579. Those are the two that I have.
I would move that we accept both checks.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? All in favor? 5-0.
Do you want to do my check real quick while you're doing them? Yep. So special ed received $700 for the partnership program to help with some of the items and food and stuff when they hold their meetings. So if we could vote to receive that and expend that money, that would be wonderful.
I would move that we accept that.
Do I have a second? Jenny? All in favor? 5-0. Okay.
Like everyone, just grateful for the support from our community on all of our warrant articles. It really means everything to all of us that we can continue to sustain the great programs that we have, so a big thank you to the town. Greatly appreciate that. For your information, we have not missed any days of school this winter. I think it's one of the first in a long time that I can remember, although they say that spring equinox is going to happen tonight. I hope I am not jinxing us and that we get, we get this weather that changes us. But right now, our current last day is scheduled for Wednesday, June 12. So with that being said, we, I hope that we're going to have a conversation tonight about our final assembly so that we can just be prepared for those 8th graders, since the, typically, they do it the day before, which is Tuesday, which would be the 11th, which is also our school board meeting. So just something to be thinking about as we move into that. So there's, there's that opportunity. The meeting is earlier. We could, you know, postpone our school board meeting by one week if we so chose, but just some things to think about. With that being said, that last day for students is a half-day with our Hampton Academy students being released at 11:30, Marston and Center School being released at 12 noon, and then our staff do that one additional day, which allows for transition and for cleaning up and packing up and just closing off a big school year. So just wanted to have that on your radar. I wanted to bring to your attention that on Tuesday, February 20, Business Administrator Mariah Curtis and I met with Dr. Mary Ford and Dr. Diane Harris's to discuss an apprentice program for our paraeducators. What this would allow is for our paraeducators to participate in a program, a National Collaborative for Digital Equity program, that would allow them to obtain their associates or bachelors with teacher certification, or a post-baccalaureate program, and become a certified teacher in four years, complete with little or no debt. It's pretty exciting. It's something that SAU 21 is offering, and they did reach out to us, and of course, we are very excited about this. On May 8, which is during our early release day, at 12:30, our paraeducators will have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Ford and Dr. Harris's to ask questions and to see if this is something they're interested in. I did have about four people reach out to me, but it's a wonderful, I would say, it's a wonderful benefit for attracting, retaining paraeducators that may be interested in coming to our district. So pretty excited about that, and a lot of this funds comes from federal funds that's available. So pretty exciting to have that coming our way, and we would probably join SAU 21 since we probably wouldn't have enough paraeducators to have our own cohort, but we would join SAU 21. So it's pretty exciting. It's, it's something that we've done with this new Masters CAGS program. We had joined a Seacoast cohort with SAU 21 in Portsmouth, so just an exciting option for our, our staff.
This one detail of that you should check out for the participants is a lot of people who are doing that with early childhood, then find they get a 1099 for their taxes. So if they're going to have to report this as income on their taxes, make sure they know it ahead of time.
Yeah, and, and the wonderful thing about Diane Harris's and Mary Ford is that Mary Ford is focused specifically on the educational piece of it, and Diane Harris's is really looking at the funding piece of it and the, also, the balancing of all of it. Because one of the things that we do know is when you are working full-time and doing, you know, graduate work or, you know, college work, it is something to be thinking about. So there seems to be a lot of support for the program, not just financially, but also in terms of what it takes to be a college student and working full-time. So I'm, I'm excited about the program. I did have a chance to talk briefly to Meredith Nadeau and Dr. Hobbs over at SAU 21, and there is, it just makes it accessible and affordable, so, but great, great to keep in mind. Thanks, Jenny. Appreciate that. We know that the second trimester did end on March 8. We know that tomorrow is an early release day for our students, and we have that opportunity to welcome in our parents for those conferences as, as we truly value those, those partnerships. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow. On April 3, members of the leadership team, along with SRO Terranzoni, will participate in a regional reunification training at the SAU 16 offices located on Linden Street in Exeter. The purpose of this training is to develop a regional response to districts in the event of an emergency that might require support. So I'm really excited that we're looking at this regional training, and it looks like it's going to be a really worthwhile day, and that'll be from 8 to 3. And while we're talking about Detective Terranzoni, just another congratulations to him for being awarded the special commendation as an SRO in our district last week. Several staff members were involved with nominating him, including Amy Hansen, Ellen Morrissey, and Amber Levine. But congratulations, and we had a great showing and a great turnout for that recognition and a very special surprise assembly. He had no idea that was happening, so it was pretty exciting for all of us. We know that the 306s, which are the minimum standards for education, are currently under review, and we had an opportunity to work collaboratively with SAU 21 on March 6 and 7 and work with Christine Downing to provide our input regarding those minimum standards. So we are hopeful that we can have our voices heard. That was one of the many, I would say, reviews happening around the state, and so it was, it was great that we could host that. On Friday of this week, we have a fairly large group of staff members who are attending the New Hampshire ASCD Conference at the Creponi Center in Concord, where the focus of this is specifically on math instruction. There are 18 sessions in addition to a keynote by Dr. Stephen Lenwand. It looks like there are over 200 participants that will be there talking about math on Friday, so great opportunity for our staff. And then there is a team headed to ASCD in Washington, D.C., March 21st to 25th, to look at this on a national level. ASC is the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, and they are actually joining forces with ISTI, which is the technology people. So this will, might be one of the last events that happens as just ASCD, is it will be a combined effort moving forward in June. You can see that we're in the process of planning for our extended school year program, obviously being mindful of some of the summer projects that are going to happen, but working with Mr. Lassard and obviously Dr. Lois De Silva-Napton on that extended year. We're hoping to host Camp Invention. However, we are still seeking a director for the program. So I'm in contact with Tim Fals, who is in charge of Camp Invention, and we're hopeful, but we are still waiting for a director. And then, of course, all And then, of course, all of our students have participated in the writing portions of the New Hampshire SAS already. It is going to be hand-scored this year, so there was a two-week window that happened just recently, and it closed. We're just doing makeups right now, but for language arts and math, that window will open up and it will go through the beginning of June. I guess, I think that's really about it. Do you have any questions for me? It's up to you. We can, you, you have the slate, it's up to you.
Okay, it looks like next on our list are renominations.
It's completely up to you.
Renominations, yeah.
Renominations, we can, the whole group can vote on the ones that have been made, and if there's any others to take down, we can take them.
Okay. Then let's do that. I know, sorry.
I'm sorry. I said, I said as the.
We were trying to decide whether to do renominations next or not, and I don't know anything.
I said that we could do the ones that we have presented, and if we are presented or talk about anyone else, then we can make the renomination at that time.
Yep. I feel like we should hold on to this, talk about it in non-public and then come back out and vote.
Okay. Do you want to move square in non-public now?
Yeah. No, I don't think we should, we've got.
Yeah, you want to talk about the end of the year.
I think we should hold on.
Yep, okay, at the end of the year to talk about.
Yep. So, so we're gonna hold on to renominations. We are gonna discuss them in non-public, and then we will come back out of non-public and vote on them. Let's see, so we have last day of school discussion. Do we need to do any more on that, or is that the discussion about the, moving the school board?
Yep. Are we, are we good with that?
Do we want to go ahead and decide on a date for the, for moving the school board meeting so we can have the eighth grade on?
First, do, do we need to make a motion about Wednesday, June 12th being a half day? Do we need to?
I think it's already in our contract, yeah. I think it's already.
It's already done.
Yep, it's on the calendar, yep.
So what was the second thing?
So, that's gonna put the eighth grade graduation, not graduation, last, end-of-year assembly as the same night as a school board. So we just need to figure out when, if we want to move the school board meeting and to when.
My suggestion might be to hold off until the April board meeting and decide if, if there's things that we have to meet for, and, and then we can decide if we're gonna have it in June or if we're just, whatever.
I think we'll, we'll need a board meeting in June, is my guess.
Okay.
So my, my recommendation is to move it back one week.
So it would be the, no.
It would be the 18th.
Eighteenth.
Oh, the 18th.
I'll make a motion that we have our June school board meeting on June 18th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
So, with that being said, I think Mr. Hawkins, not to put you on the spot, but when I spoke with Mrs. Hansen earlier today, she said that you had been advertising it to be that the day before school gets out, so barring any snow days, of course, I'm probably just jinxing myself, you would be good to have it on that Tuesday.
Yeah, the 11th.
Yep.
We should be okay, I mean, we've got, even if we have a snow day, do we have to?
It's typically the day before school gets out.
Yeah.
But that's okay. Thank you, just wanted, just wanted to confirm that.
Wait, wait, wait.
This is where we were. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
So, it looks like Springfield Trip Updates is next, so I'm guessing that is you, sir.
Sure. So, on the 3rd through the 7th will be, the Spanish trip will go to Puerto Rico. The following Friday, I believe is the 12th or 13th, will be the Quebec trip. The eighth grade trip is the 14th to the 17th of May, and Hammond Castle, we're looking at, they just emailed me, and they are nailing down the 5th and the 6th of June. So, Kennedy Lake hasn't opened yet. I keep pressuring Kim Warburton, she hates to see me now because the first question I ask her is, have they announced their hours yet? And they have not. So, they're still waiting on, trying to figure out if they're gonna be opening at 8:45 or at 10:00 or whenever, and then we can have that discussion after that.
Who is the lucky people that get to chaperone Puerto Rico?
This year, it is just Ms. Coffel and myself.
Okay. Who are the lucky people that are gonna go to Quebec?
Mr. Westfall, Ms. Wilcox. Detective Terranzoni, and then, but I can explain that.
Okay.
Are we all set for DC? Everybody's, money's all good? We're, you know what I'm asking.
Yes. The short answer, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So everybody who wants to go is all set?
100%.
Okay, that's great. All right.
When Nancy comes back, she'll be able to.
When Nancy comes back?
Balance everything out.
When is Nancy coming back? I think we're all waiting for Nancy.
We're all waiting for Nancy to come back.
Yes.
And if she's watching right now, we miss you.
We miss her terribly.
And I can't, I can't give Amy Hansen enough praise for doing, going above and beyond and having the utmost patience with myself, and she's doing a wonderful job, and we would, we couldn't do it without her, so.
She's holding down the fort, but yes, if Nancy is watching, Amy would also like for you to come back.
Yes.
I think I can speak on her behalf.
We can reiterate that one, too.
She's ready. Yes, all right. All right. Thank you, I think we're all set. Mariah, are you next?
I am next. Okay, so, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so pleased that our budget passed. That was such a wonderful thing. I gave you my monthly report for our budget and for food service. I also gave you an update on the ESER grant, which we did a little bit more adjustment to, so I probably will give you the ESER grant again next month, because what we did since the Warren, Warren Articles did pass, we adjusted some of the facilities funds that we had in the ESER fund and put it into transportation and services for special ed for the rest of this year to try to cover some of the deficit that we're having in special ed, to hopefully help make up for the shortage that we're gonna have in my fund balance. So, we are working on that, so that was approved last week. We are now taking all the purchase orders and trying to adjust that so we can see where we're gonna kind of land and give me a better idea, but I think it's gonna help tremendously once that gets cleaned up. So, that grant needs to be completed by September, so it actually kind of helps us clean that grant up a little bit and, and help the fund balance at the same time. I also have to have that updated, that grant has to be updated and will be on the website so that you can see what we've spent so far for that grant and what's been encumbered and adjusted for that grant. So feel free to, in the next few weeks, check the website out. Also, I was hoping to have the MS-22 done today, but I did not get the information from the school district clerk for our minutes and our, for the deliberative meeting, and that I have to reach out to her, and then I'll finish the MS-22 that has to go to the state, hoping that once that's done, since I don't have it for you here to sign, if you can come visit me in the office, I'll send you guys an email when it's completed. That is just the approved Warren Article budget. I have to put that and update it and then have you sign it, and then send it back to the state. So I'll get that completed and I'll send out an email if you, and then have you guys come to the office. Other than that, it's just starting to get cleaned up and now figure out all Keith's projects for the year, some of the funding adjustments for like the boiler that we finally get the RFP on, the RFP for the Center School Playground, which the PTA is gonna help, they donated some funds for that. Keith and I have like seven projects going on, so we're trying to get most of that completed and cleaned up before June. So I'll give you a list next month, too, on those projects and where we land with those once the RFPs are completed. Any questions?
I need to just understand, the ESER grant, I can't seem to find the other page that it has, that money is going to be different? I guess I don't understand.
So we had, all right, so in the ESER grant, we had, way back when it first started, three years ago, put some of the money for the air conditioning, or not the air conditioning, the air quality in that grant, and we had Warren Articles in that grant to go aside to offset it, to do the whole project at Center School. When the RFP, nobody bid for it, and then we finally got a bid, and then the bid was double the amount that we expected, and then they decided that they couldn't do it, and we had nobody, and that's why we put it on the Warren Article. That money has just been sitting on the ESER grant, because we didn't want to take that away from Keith in case we were gonna utilize it if we needed the funds. Now that we know that we have those funds to do the air quality, we adjusted that to put into some of the services for special ed for this year to help cover the deficit, so transportation.
Does the figure that you have for the ESER account, does that reflect that you have not taken anything out of it for the air quality?
As of yet, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, and that will be completely, it just got approved, the ESER grant, so that will be completely updated and put on our website so that you can see how much we've spent to date, what we've spent it on, and what we're encumbering the rest of the funds for. That's very important, so feel free to look at that spreadsheet once it's completed and up on the website. It'll probably be done by next week.
What is the total value of unpaid lunches?
That, I think it was 5,000, I don't know the exact amount, like $5,382 for whatever reason I'm thinking about, but we just, I think that was about the, the cost, yes.
How do we propose to pay that?
So, if we do not get the collections for that, that does, the fund balance has to somehow cover that.
So that's in addition to the $67,571 that's already below.
Correct.
So we're really out $72,000.
Correct.
Okay.
We, like Mary said, that we, I do have our coming in office. It's about every three weeks we meet now, and we have a collections plan. We are working on, on plans on how to do, how to get better, how to get more people to utilize food service, try to get the kids involved, where the cost, what we're selling and what we're spending aren't obviously not matching, and we're trying to figure that out. I don't know if it's inventory, if it's employee rate, if it's labor, I, I, so I've been sitting with Mary and trying to dig up that information. We're working on that. It's been a problem, it's, we're not the only school with that problem. Our fund balance will cover that this year because food service does have a fund balance. Prior from, when we had COVID, we still have that fund sitting there, so it will cover it this year, but we need to come up, definitely need to come up with a plan for next year because we can't keep going in that direction.
Well, we have to come up with a plan on how to collect the money from the people who are taking lunches.
100%. So we have procedures and we have a policy, and we just have to get a little bit more strict on following it.
We're gonna get to this at some point, whether it's in budget season or it's before budget season.
100%.
I'm wondering if we, if we took the number of breakfasts at all three schools and the number of lunches at all three schools, and we plugged in an increase, whether it's 10 cents, 5 cents, 15 cents, and see what it would have done for our budget this year. It'll give us some more information when we start talking about that. I mean, I'm not advocating that we increase the prices of lunch, but if we're gonna have to do that, we ought to have some background information.
100%, yep, and, and we are getting the numbers and comparing them to years past to see if it's dropped. We're going through all those processes.
But you, you have hard, you're gonna have hard facts for this school year.
Yes, this is like.
Number of breakfasts, number of lunches.
One full normal year.
Plug it in and see what an increase, see what an increase would do.
Yes, projections.
And maybe we have to add a line in the budget for unpaid lunches, because no matter what you do to beat people over the head.
Well, here's the problem, I don't want to say that we're gonna cover.
Right.
Cover people's meals, because at the end of the day, the, it's, you hear that and they, then it does not get paid, and I think that's what we've been saying for such a long time, that people just assume that we will cover it, and at the end of the day, we have to cover it, but it's taking away from other items.
So do you explain that to the people who owe money at this point? Have you explained to them that they do have to figure out what they're doing?
Yes, yes, we have let, we have, like I said, we have a process, we have a process, we have procedures. I think that we, we need to get a little, like, we, we have a process that if you owe so much money, you can't get that second slice of pizza, or it's not taking a food away or making them eat a cheese sandwich, it's nothing like that, but we do have procedures where you can't get that extra snack, you can't get that special ice cream, or you can't, we don't, we don't do that, and I think that we need to pull back and relook at our process and procedures and stick with them. They're there for a reason, and get a little bit stronger with our collection calls, get a little bit stronger with the, the emails and follow-ups and that kind of stuff, yes, I do think we need to work on that.
Okay. On, on page, I just want to get clarification. On page 53, you said, "Continue to pay for transportation of students to and from summer school in the summer of 2022." Did you mean 2024?
Yes, that was last, last summer school. So this grant has been going on for three years, so you'll see past and future.
All right, and then, again, on page 56, revised, delete 30,000 from this activity to port toward daily long-term building-based sub.
Yes, so we were trying to get a building-based sub at the academy at one point. To help because, to help with, we were having a lot of people out, and it would have been easier for us to have a building-based sub at the school to cover the, the one little classes randomly. We never were able to fill that position, ever. We had it posted, and, so those, that's one of the things that we just adjusted.
Okay, and delete 15,000 for PD for Hampton Academy. Science of reading.
So they had originally set that up and it never went through, so we had to adjust that and, and reallocate it to something else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Mar? Any more questions for Mar? Any more questions for Mariah? Everybody's good? We have a resignation?
And actually, we have two, one that just came in.
Okay.
So in addition to the one that's in your board packet, we also received this one as well, based on a change in a family situation, so. Pretty late, but we want to make sure that we get it in so that we can continue to move forward, so.
How many did that leave at the academy that we got to replace?
There were nine teachers with the, yeah, given the, yeah, correct. So you have, you have two resignations in front of you? Let's take, should we take one at a time?
We have three.
Well, I'm looking at these two. Oh, from, I'm starting with Hampton Academy. But you, we can do it however you would like. What's your, what's your pleasure?
We could do them one at a time, might be easier.
Yes, absolutely.
What if we start with the, with the one that's, we have, we'll start with the one in your packet, and that would be, you have the resignation of Kevin Burke?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kevin Burke.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny?
Okay. All in favor?
Also in your packet, you have, you have the resignation of Julie Jefferson, who is retiring at the end of this year?
I'll make a motion to accept Julie Jefferson's intent to retire with regret?
Yes, very much so. All in favor? That's a shame.
Yep. And then finally, one that just came to our attention within the last week is we have Mrs. Karen Tierney's letter of resignation as she will be taking some time with her family, so.
I'd move that.
Second? Okay, Jenny? All in favor?
Is that the second math teacher we lost?
Yes, correct.
We have a nomination in your packet as well. I'd like to nominate Mr. Mark Robital, who is going to replace Principal Tim Lannan, who is retiring at the end of this year. I know Les, you had the honor of serving on that committee.
He was the committee's choice. It was a large committee. I don't know if it was 13, 14 people, it was a big committee, and he emerged as the committee's choice.
I had the opportunity to meet with him. We had a very in-depth conversation. I also had the opportunity to speak with his superintendent, and Mike Fornier spoke very highly of the candidate.
Would somebody like to nominate him? Les?
I think Lois nominates.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate him, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
He has the first and second.
Yeah, somebody on the board has to nominate him, right?
Yeah.
I'm nominating him.
Okay. Okay. Do we just need to vote?
I need a first and a second.
Yeah, we need a first and a second.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, you have to have a first and a second.
Yes. Lois isn't the board member, she can't, she is nominating him to us, right? But we still have to, I assume?
I'm not.
No, no, I'm just, you were just in my line of sight, that's all.
Would somebody accept his nomination?
Okay, I will accept his nomination. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Molly. Okay. All in favor?
Well, I just.
I'm sorry, go ahead, yep. I'm sorry, discussion?
Just a little confused on protocol.
Feel free to tell me if I'm doing this wrong.
I always thought the superintendent nominated.
Okay.
They do, but you have the first and second on the board.
I didn't know that. The board can't nominate.
No, huh.
They have two people that agree with the nomination.
Okay. Just a little confused on that.
Do we, do we need to vote? I'm true, I'm asking a genuine question. Do we need to vote?
We have to vote. I always thought we voted to accept her nomination.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. Let's vote to accept the nomination. All in favor? You know I don't know what I'm doing. Feel free, feel free to tell me when I'm doing it wrong.
No, no, I, I.
I know, it's okay.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, so we did 4-0-1?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I lost track a little bit. Policies, yes.
They're on second reads.
Sorry, I just lost my list here. There we go. Okay, yes, so we have second reads?
I would move all of the second reads.
That would be great. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, sorry, do we have a second? Okay, does anybody have any questions or discussion about them? Nope? Okay. Are we good? All right. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
For, do you want to?
I'm going to abstain.
Yep, so 4-0-1, so Molly abstained on that, perfect. Okay, and let's go ahead and do minutes. We have minutes from the February 13th meeting. Does anybody have any changes?
I would move the minutes, regular board minutes of the 13th.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, Jenny? All right, does anybody have any, any discussion or changes? Do we think we're good? All right. All in favor? And we have minutes from the non-public session, also on February 13th. Anybody want to move those?
I'll make a motion to accept them.
Okay, thank you.
Are these both issue one and issue two?
Yes, do we need to vote on them separately? I sort of assumed so, but we can do them.
Is your motion to accept both of them?
I'll make a motion to accept both of the non-public.
Okay. Here, I'll second, presuming I can. Okay, all in favor? And minutes of the non-public session from March 5th. Motion to accept? Jenny? Okay. Any second? Andrea, second. Any discussion or comments on that? Nope. All in favor?
No, I don't think Andrea can vote on that.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, no.
Sorry, so, abstaining. Because she wasn't, yes, she's abstaining, yep, that's fair.
I just happened to notice that, so, three of us.
Yep, so, 3-0-1, or 3-0-2. Okay, so I think it's time for non-public. Am I missing anything? We should do, we should do public comment before we go in, yep, before we go into not, to non-public. So do we have anybody who would like to make public comment? Anybody going once? Going twice? We got a couple of people out there. Okay. All right, seeing as no one is here for public comment, I think we are going to go to non-public session.
I'd make a motion that we go into non-public under RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2, section D.
All right.
D. D.
Do we have a second? All right.
Sorry, it was A.
It was A, okay, yeah. It's, it's A on my list.
I put my glasses on.
All right, roll call. Les?
Yes.
Andrea? I'm yes? And you just say yeah.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so we're going to go into non-public. Everybody turn their mic.
Sure. We're live.
Okay. We're back, we're out of non-public. Okay, we are going to vote on, let's vote on our renominations for. Center School.
I, I would move that we accept this whole page.
The list as written?
As submitted.
Okay. I'll second that one. All in favor? 5-0? All right. Did we have a discussion about the librarian in public? I can't remember. Or did we, yes, so we did that piece already, okay, all right. Okay, next is the Marston renomination list. Do I have a move to accept the list as is? Have a second? All right, all in favor? 5-0? Okay, and now we're at the Hampton Academy list. Do I have a motion to accept? This is the, just teachers only, so do I have the motion to accept the list?
I, I would, I would second that with one change.
Okay.
Didn't we just accept Karen Tierney's resignation?
Oh, yes, you are correct.
We ought to cross that one off.
This one, yes.
Other than that, I second it.
Sorry, who moved it? Did I move it?
Jenny.
Oh, Jenny did, okay. All right, all in favor? All right. So administration appointments, are we going through these one by one or are we looking at the list as it is?
Your pleasure.
Thanks.
We could try to do them all at once.
Let's, yep, let's do the list all at once. I, I think, yeah.
So it's as listed on this paper?
It's as listed on, on this.
Molly, you have this paper?
To accept the reappointments that are listed here.
Okay, yep, so we'll do just the reappointments, okay? Second for that?
Second.
All in favor? So this is just the reappointments?
This is for the reappointments.
Specifically the reappointments?
Okay.
Of, so it's the top part of the list, so we can read it, it's Center Marston and district wide.
Can we vote again?
Sure, yes. So, so this is, this is all in favor of accepting the administrative reappointments? Yes, so. 5-0 on that. We don't have to vote on the retirement, right?
We already did.
We've already accepted that, yes. And we've accepted the resignation already at.
Yes.
So we have one non-renewal, Mr. Hawkins. Someone like to?
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation of non-renewal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? And motion carries 3-2.
Was there something else we had to do when we came out? No.
I don't think so. We rearranged a little bit, but I think, I think we got everything. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All right, all in favor? And we're done.